Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our July ninth, two thousand and twenty four Phoenixville Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our meeting both in person and virtually. And we are glad that you've joined us tonight in council chambers and on Zoom. During the public participation and public hearings portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually. And a member of our staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name. You'll then be able to make comment to council. We will start with members of the public who are here in council chambers with us tonight. And then those joining us remotely will have two public comment periods, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. And we do ask the participation during a public participation period is limited to once per period. And then we do ask the comments are kept two, three minutes or less. So with that, we will now begin our monthly meeting with the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence.
Let it continue by the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we will begin with roll call. Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Carbonito. Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Strunfeld.
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
President.
Mr. Evil.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager here, Assistant Chief Solicitor, you have a call. Thank you, sir. With that, we will turn this over to Mayor Urschler and Police Chief Brian Marshall for the presentations on the swearing in of two officers.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to those of you who are joining us here today in the council chambers, and especially also thank you to those of you who are joining us virtually. We are very fortunate to have with us today an exciting celebration, and that is as we welcome two extraordinary new officers into the Phoenixville Police Department. For those who are at home, you may, you're not able to see it on your screens. But around the back walls, we have our extraordinary members of the Phoenixville Police Department, as well as our Phoenixville Police Department Chaplain Pastor Dan McDowell, who are here with us today. And so before we begin, certainly in a world that is turbulent and tumultuous, we are fortunate here in this community to have an extraordinary police force that upholds the extraordinary values and commitment to ensuring every person in our community is treated with respect and dignity. And so I just want to take this opportunity to publicly recognize and thank all of the police officers that we have here with us today. Thank you for your tireless service to this community and for all that you do. Thank you all very much. And with that, I would now like to welcome up, we will actually be moving to the center microphone. But I would first like to welcome our Police Department Chaplain, Chaplain Dan McDowell, who will provide a benediction for us, followed by Chief Brian Marshall, who will be providing the biographies for each of our new officers. Thank you very much.
Hi Hunter and Jeremy. My name is Reverend Dan McDowell. And it is my pleasure to serve as the chaplain for our fine Police Department. And I'm here on behalf of the community just to express our gratitude to you for becoming a part of this community. We believe that you have our backs, and I am here to say that we have yours as well. And so, uh, welcome to the team, welcome to the community. And let me know if there is any way I can come alongside you and provide you with spiritual support in that process. And with that in mind, I'd like to take just a moment to say a prayer for you. Father, we pray for the safety and well-being of Hunter and Jeremy and their families, knowing that this can be a stressful job and one that is often thankless. We ask your protection for them. We ask your wisdom and your insight. Amen.
It's my great pleasure to introduce the newest members of the Phoenixville Police Department. Hunter Evans, Jeremy Geisler accept their offer of employment after doing exceptionally well throughout a rigorous hiring process that began back in January of this year. They both demonstrated that they were among the best of the best from the pool of applicants. And I'm pleased to welcome them to the Phoenix community along with their families. Hunter Evans will go first. We'll go in alphabetical order. Hunter Evans was born in Sellers, O.P.A. He grew up in the Lansdale area. He graduated from North Penn High School and currently serves the United States Army National Guard. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Clifton University. And Hunter graduated from the Delaware County Police Academy in two thousand and twenty-two. Prior to joining the Phoenixville Police Department, Hunter was employed as a police officer with Westbury, New Orleans Township. And he spent a year with the College of a Borough Police Department before joining us here in Chester County. Hunter comes highly recommended from both of those agencies. Hunter is joined here this evening by his mother, his sister, sister-in-law, and his girlfriend Taylor. We'll be holding in the Bible for him. Come up here.
Perfect. Please let, raise your right hand. I.
Aye.
State your name.
Hunter Evans.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
I will.
I will.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
As an officer.
As an officer.
With the borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
With the borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
Phoenixville.
Phoenixville.
Chester County.
Chester County.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
Of a person's race.
Person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations, Officer Evans. Welcome.
Jeremy, go step up here. The ex, the next officer for this evening, Jeremy Geiser was born in Phoenixville and raised in Roersford, P.A. He graduated from Springfield in two thousand and fifteen. Jeremy owned associate's degree from Montgomery County Community College and also graduated from Westchester University in two thousand and twenty-one with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Jeremy enrolled in the Police Academy at Montgomery County Community College in January of this year, and he graduated in June. Jeremy is joined here this evening with his mother and father, his girlfriend Nicole, who'll be holding the Bible for him this evening.
Raise your right hand. I.
Aye.
State your name.
Jeremy Geisler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
I will.
I will.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
As an officer.
As an officer.
Of the borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
As a borough, as an officer of the borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
Phoenixville.
Phoenixville.
Chester County.
Chester County.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania.
I will obey, uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
Of a person's race.
Of a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that again, please welcome to Phoenixville for the first time Officer Evans and Officer Geisler, our newest Phoenixville Police Officers.
Thank you very much.
And certainly in closing, we are fortunate to have an extraordinary, if you have a chance, please just look behind you at the extraordinary police officers we have in this room who are dedicated to the service of this wonderful community. And they really make sure Phoenixville is a place where every single person is not only loved and celebrated, but most of all, they are also safe here with us. And so thank you very much, officers and family members, if you would, please join us in the lobby for photos, and we will turn it back over to you, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. We'll just take a moment, let the room exit. All right. We will now resume with our agenda tonight. I did fail to mention under roll call tonight that Councilman Carbonito is excused absent, so he will not be joining us tonight. With that, we will move to the first round of public participation. As I mentioned prior to opening comments tonight, if you're joining us online, if you want to raise your hand digitally, our staff will make our way through the list of those joining us virtually. And then any members who are joining us in person tonight, if you want to make your way up to the podium, we do ask that you sign in on the sheet that's provided with the microphone. And then when you announce, if you can just let us know your name and whether you are a resident or business here in the borough. So any members wishing to make public comment tonight?
Hello, my name is Woodley Humphries. I live on the north side of Phoenixville. I'm just here to share my enthusiasm for the MDM Nature Preserve project that is on the agenda for tonight. Grateful for everyone that's put any effort towards it, and I'm excited for the project to move forward, and I just wanted to share my commitment to the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Keller, and I am a resident of Phoenixville. And I've been a member of the Juneteenth Planning Committee for the last four or five years that we've, we've been doing this and have been here every month for four or five months to talk about Juneteenth and the events. I want to let you know that this week we received a check for eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, a refund for the deposit and for fees not expended. So thank you all very much for having that happen. But we do really want to continue this conversation and actually have a conversation as we've been asking for four or five months to talk about the fees, how the fees are assigned, how they're waived. Because we found out after the last Borough Council meeting that Quanis was able to have their fees waived for their event ten days before. And when we asked if we could have our, what the process is to have the Juneteenth fees waived, one of the comments was, well, you've already paid and we don't do refunds. So it's just been a lot of mixed messages. It's been hard on the event planners to have had the fees doubled, tripled, and quadrupled in some cases with very short notice, a lot of stress on the organizations. And then to get half of the money back is fabulous. We really appreciate that. But we still would like to know what the process is and how the decisions are made to waive or not to waive, and what kind of fees are assigned. And when Mayor Peter is talking about the diversity in our community and how everyone is so welcome, when you look at the different events, we're talking about Juneteenth, Pride Fest, Blob Fest, the Art Street Festival, Alianza's Festival. This is really a very diverse and unique community, and those are some pretty unique kinds of events. And we're feeling kind of pushed to the side and not a place to have a conversation. So we would really like to be able to do that and hope to do it sooner. We were encouraged offline to go to the Policy Committee. The Policy Committee was rescheduled in April and then canceled. In May, we had a conversation by email about when the next meeting was going to be, and we were told that we were going to, it was going to be encouraged that there'd be space to talk about events at the May meeting, said, please let us know when the May meeting happens. And the May meeting happened, and we weren't notified, so we didn't know that it happened, and then the June meeting was canceled. So this has been a sequence for quite some time of just feeling kind of pushed aside. And, you know, we'd like to be treated like Dogwood Festival is, where there's a number of people on council that are actively involved with the Dogwood Festival, and I know it's been around for seventy-five years, it's got longevity, but there's things that, that these unique and diverse community events bring to the borough that we would like to be able to talk about. And the other thing, just so that you know, is we've heard a variety of different messages along the line, rumors, I'm going to just call them, that the fees were going to be canceled, that some of the fees were going to be canceled, that some. So there's been a lot of behind-the-scenes kind of conversations, and we get that. But then the way the message has got to us has been very odd. So I just want you to know that going forward, the event planning committees would like to meet with Borough Council and talk about this, how we can support you, how you can support us, how we can continue to be this diverse and welcoming community that we've always been. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for the refund. Hope you all enjoy your shirts. We've got one for you also, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
I'm Shana Pratt. I live in two thousand and twenty-four Phoenixville, Valley Forge, Phoenix, Valley View Road in Phoenixville. I wasn't going to say anything, however, I want to follow up with Chris about the fees. As you know, I host the Phoenixville Art Street Festival, and I really appreciate you guys working with us this year. We were able to do the festival. And then I was talking with another event, and they were sharing with me that their fees were what our fees were originally. So I have concern for next year now. And I understand that the major expense is security in the police, a necessary expense. But I'm hoping that you guys could try to find a way to make that more reasonable for events. Particularly ours, we only get money from our vendors. So it makes it very challenging to have the money to pay for the fees when we're, we have to charge our vendors so much. We struggled this year. A lot of people couldn't afford it. We did get our vendors. I mean, we had a very successful event. But there's always that concern going into the next year, like, will we make those fees? I know next year will be okay, but the following year, if it's so high, we, we might not be able to do it. So just my two cents.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment in this first round of public participation? If you're joining us virtually, if you want to hand, raise your hand digitally, if you're here in the room, you have to step up to the podium. If you'll sign in on the sheet that's provided, and then if you can state your name and whether you're a resident or business owner here in the borough.
Oh, I'm a resident. Okay, my name's Exbaluch. I've been in Phoenixville for four generations. I'm speaking on behalf of the youth Papa League playing basketball. I want to know why the last four games, only one of them was in the new Civic Center where there's. Right now, we're having a heat wave, historical heat wave. Why aren't they letting these kids go in there and play? You got grandparents going to see them. They're out in the heat, sweltering, the kids are sweltering. I want to know why you're not opening that up, that gym up for the kids. That's junior high and senior high kids. I want to know why that they're not able to go in there in the air conditioning. It don't have to be every game, but if there's a historical heat wave, you know, come on, let's work together. I was at all four games. One game was inside, it was beautiful. The others were outside in extreme heat. One was a vicious rainstorm. And I went today and talked to the lady. She didn't have no answer. She had no phone number. She told me if I want to see the game, have somebody tape it, and she would watch. I could watch it at home. No, uh, it's just, I, I can't see why you're not using the Civic Center for the, for the youth, for the kids playing basketball. That's the Papa League. Does anybody have any comment?
Sir, this is public.
You're the only one I know.
Excuse me.
I don't know anybody else here.
Excuse me, sir. This is public comment. We do not respond. You are here to provide your public comment, and we will take it under advisement.
I've never been here before.
Understood.
Just letting you know how I feel. All right? Four generations in this town. I own multiple properties. I've been paying taxes for over thirty-five years. I just wish that you guys would maybe look into it. I would really appreciate it. For, you know, the grandparents and the, and the parents and, and the kids. You could see him damn near falling out there playing ball. So I just wish that you would get together and talk about it. All right? Is that all right with you, Solicitor?
We appreciate the comment.
All right.
Yep.
Have a nice day.
Thank you. Thank you. See no other residents looking to make public participation? We'll move on, close the first round. There is a second round later in the agenda. With that, that brings up our consent agenda for tonight. Linky, is there any items under the consent agenda that anybody's wishing to remove or any questions on any items in the consent agenda?
With that, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for today's regular meeting.
Second. Motion and a second by Ms. Berkeley and Mr. Weiss. I will just say congratulations to Matty's on a roll. We're excited for another new business on Bridge Street in the three hundred block. It will be a nice addition. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to communications council participation, are there any updates or otherwise communications from council that you'd like to bring to the floor tonight? Mr. Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Picking up on what, what Mr. Baluch was saying, just before I came up here tonight, I saw the kids out on the lower field at Patton-Adel Field. Soccer, there's a soccer. I guess it's a program that the rec department has up there, and it's hot. And I was wondering, why aren't they in the Civic Center tonight? Now, there's probably something going on, but you know, I, I think he raises a legitimate point. I mean, I, I had a son who played in the Papa League, and I've been out there sweltering on, you know, it's the Johns or of a reservoir park. And, you know, one time we got to play in the old Civic Center. They got to play in the old Civic Center, and that was like a treat, so. And that didn't have any air conditioning. So I, I think, I, I think it's, it's a legitimate question. But, you know, we spent eight million dollars on that, and weather like this should be able to use it for those programs. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. Ms. Dugan.
Um, actually, I have an answer to this one, so that I'm, I was hoping that he would hang around so I could answer for him. Whenever there isn't scheduled programs that people have already paid for, because a lot of the times the gym is rented out. And if there's something already scheduled, then they can't just let the basketball team come in, because that's just not normally scheduled. But when it is open, that's when they've been allowed to come in, and it's, it has nothing to do with like, we're not letting them in. It's just there are already previously scheduled things that are getting, like, they're paying us to rent the gym. So we can't just cancel that and bring them into play, but we will do that every single time we have the opportunity. But it's not always like that, because, you know, we only have the one area.
We should have built it bigger. Any other comments from council tonight?
Mr. President, just, just two quick things. I love the way you're thinking. Two quick things. One, I did get to enjoy and partake in the Juneteenth celebration, so thank you to those who did plan that. It was a really nice day, and to be part of that really was moving, and there was a lot of different things to take part in throughout the day. It was a very hot day, so thank you all for being out there and braving that. I really appreciated it. It was lovely. And then this Fourth of July, thank you to everyone, you know, throughout the borough. A lot goes into all those celebrations. I happen to be, have the advantage of joining Mayor Urschler, and we got to hang out with the Police Department a little bit. So we brought lunch to them, and they showed us some cameras, and just being with them and being in the apartment and seeing how the day works for them, how a holiday works for them, because sometimes that makes different activity and interesting activity. And it was really nice to see what they're doing and how they're connecting with the community and, you know, see them putting to use some of the things that we've invested in. So it was a nice experience for me, and I just wanted to thank them for the work they're doing.
Thank you. Any other updates from council tonight? See, now we'll move on to the mayor's report. Mayor Urschler.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again also for your support during our swearing-in ceremony for our two new officers. We want to extend a very special congratulations to our Detective Sergeant Pat Mark, who recently completed Northwestern University's Police Command School. And we are also very excited to announce that Lieutenant Brian McIntyre and Sergeant Kyle Place will be completing the same program in the August timeframe. And so always exciting to have these opportunities for our officers to expand on their educational knowledge and continue to have the best practices in the, in the police industry, if you will. Also, I'd just like to join Councilwoman Beth Berkeley and, and Ms. Berkeley. And again, just congratulations to the extraordinary team that put on Juneteenth, just another very successful event, a lot of fun. Some of them are in the audience with us today. So thank you all very much for your work around that, but not only the work that went into on the sixteenth. So we celebrate here around Juneteenth, usually the Sunday before. But also there was a lot of work that went into actual events on Juneteenth itself, so on June nineteenth, in conjunction with a number of organizations, including the Colonial Theater. So thank you for all of your work on that important holiday. Very special congratulations to Delaware Valley Veg, who successfully hosted a dinner on Vert. That's a green dinner, a green pop-up dinner. If everyone's, anyone's interested to learn more about Delaware Valley Veg, they help to promote veganism and also to reduce our impact on the earth through our eating. And so you can check them out at Delaware Valley Veg on Facebook. Also, Ms. Berkeley and I would like to thank all of our staff, not only our Police Department, but our incredible Public Works Department, our Rec Center, our Megan, Meg in our borough offices. Just thank you to all of the incredible borough staff that made us have an incredible Fourth of July holiday. It was extremely successful. Of course, we celebrated on the fifth with our fireworks and also a wonderful First Friday. And so thank you to everyone who made that possible and came out to support that event. I was very fortunate last Sunday to join Dr. Greg Valino from Village Optical. For those of you who know, he's a local optometrist, and he actually volunteers with a group called Angel Flight East. If you've ever had the opportunity to learn about them, they actually provide free medical flights to families all over the country who are seeking specialized medical care. And so I got to join Greg and another pilot, and we flew to Virginia and picked up a bay. And so I got to join Greg and another pilot and we flew to Virginia and picked up a baby who was going to have an open heart surgery. And then went to Pittsburgh where the baby's actually going to have the open heart surgery. And so it's all volunteer. The pilots provide the plane and they pay for all the fuel for the family. And so it's to ensure that families who have specialized medical needs receive the treatment from the specialized institution that they need to go to. And so Angel Flight East, a great organization. If anyone in the community ever needs that type of resource or somebody that you know, check them out. They're a great nonprofit organization. Coming up, we have the Kimberton Fair. Get ready for some donuts. That's going to be on July twenty second through the night, through the twenty seventh. And that will be over at the Kimberton Fire Company. And then also mark your calendars for National Night Out, which will be August sixth. Where you'll be able to come and visit with all of our police officers and a number of first responders right up at the Rec Center. Other than that, continue to have a very safe holiday, a safe summer holiday. And back to you, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, section native tonight's agenda is appointments, where we ask residents who are interested in being appointed to various boards, commissions and committees to submit applications to, to help volunteer and help organize and run the, the fine borough. Current vacancies exist on Civil Service Commission, Human Relations Commission and our Tree Advisory Commission. So if any members of our, of the borough are interested in joining any of these boards or committees, please reach out to your councilperson or staff. Be happy to walk you through the painless process. We do not have any new business or public hearings tonight, which brings us to resolutions and ordinances. We do have two items tonight, one item stemming out of I TTS. What is council's pleasure for the resolution for Birdtown?
Can I make a motion to adopt a resolution designating the I TTS committee as the representation floor and authorizing the submission of an application for Birdtown designation?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? Ms. Dugan?
I was just wondering, um, how was this initiated? Who did it go through? You know, I didn't know about it.
Sure. I believe it did go, it spent time in the I TTS agenda. So I know the, the normal format for some, for Birdtowns is, there's a number of different committees it can land in. And for the borough, the I TTS was the one that felt most logical. So I, Mr. Weiss, if you want to.
Nothing really to add beyond that. I think it came to the committee through me. Just as a concept. And then as we started exploring what it would take to become a bird town. It needed a governing committee and that felt like the right place.
Okay, thank you. That was, that's great.
We'll get two signs for it. Yes, very exciting. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. And now we have a related to Birdtown. What is council's pleasure for the acceptance and dedication of three parcels on the north side?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the dedication of three parcels of land identified as UPI NOS fifteen four eight, fifteen four ten and fifteen four thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, authorizing the acceptance of these three parcels.
Just, just to clarify, it is portions, not the entire.
Sorry.
Parcels of fifteen dash four dash eight and fifteen dash four dash ten.
Very good. Any questions on the motion? It's been well discussed. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Those parcels will do well with new Birdtown program. With that, we'll move on to section twelve of tonight's agenda with reports committees of committees, boards and commissions. Ms. Dugan with Harb.
Everything already went through the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Moore with Planning Commission.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Nothing, no projects were approved from last month. There were two ordinances that were reviewed. And the Planning Camp Commission recommended to Borough Council to approve both of them. And as I discussed earlier, I believe that they're going to be, they're part of the, some of the rezoning that we're doing.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
And the next meeting will be this coming Thursday.
Good.
That's it.
Mr. Kirkman with Regional Planning.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are all anticipating the great play out of the Wawa Sheets War at the intersection of Route twenty three and White Horse Road. The Exxon station is closing. Wawa is going to start construction there momentarily and Sheets has a plan pending before Schuylkill Township. And Sheets is also going to have a district office in the, in the building behind what used to be the Royal Bank Building there on the south east corner there. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out the, you know, the, the old Wawa Sheets War. And also, um, the regional planning committees for Phoenixville still does not have an alternate. The, since Deb Johnson left the Planning Commission, there's been no Planning Commission designate to attend the regional planning committees. Phoenixville is the only municipality of the six that doesn't have a Planning Commission member attending the meeting. So I hope that with the next meeting, we have a full complement of Phoenixville representation at the regional planning committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And are those meetings still virtual or are they in person now?
They, they are virtual. We had one in-person meeting, I think, in May. And as far as the summer goes, we're, if we have no business pending before the committee for July or August, we're just going to cancel those meetings and move on.
May I ask a question? Is that just maybe a point of like orienting some of the new Planning Commission? So I'm sure Mr. Moore could probably, you know, at the next meeting, orient them to that because I think, you know, someone would want to attend. Thank you, Mr. Kirk.
Well, that's why I want to bring it up here to get it out on the floor.
We can stress that the chair of the Planning Commission takes this duty serious.
I saw him out of the corner of my eye.
I, I will, and I will make sure that it is brought up in, as part of the new business agenda on this week's discussion.
Thank you all. Ms. Dugan with Rec Board.
Okay, this month is a lot shorter than normal because we have, most of our programs are either full or in progress, but these are the ones coming up. So right now we've got special events, the yoga and live music with the Holtz on Wednesday, August fourteenth from six to seven. July twenty ninth to August second, we've got the following camps still available. Youth Yoga and Mindfulness Camp, Young Rembrandts Art Camp, Youth NFL Flag Football, Fundamentals of Tennis, Snapology, Chess Wizards and Science Explorers Camp. Then there's the ramp up skateboarding, July and August, the, with beginner and skate club for more experienced people at the Morris Street Park on Wednesdays at the lot at Maiden Bridge on Saturdays. And then finally the adult programs, we've got the Women's Fall Volleyball League. The registration is now open. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan.
Ms. Dugan, just, did you say that those youth programs?
There are the ones that are still available.
They still have openings. Okay. I thought that's what you said.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Carmineo is not here tonight. I don't believe there's any action out of TAC this month. I believe they met, but no action to report. We do appreciate the work they're doing as this fall. Hopefully we get some more trees in. Ms. Berkeley with Human Relations Commission.
No action to report. The Human Relations Commission did appoint a chair and we do have that all updated on our website. And they have been out in the community a bit. And then our next meeting, we will be joined by some officers from the police department, just to kind of develop that relationship. And, you know, develop that dialogue.
Blend right into personnel and public safety, Ms. Berkeley.
And no action to report there. Again, congratulations and to the new officers. Kind of putting on my civil service commission hat. It was nice to be part of that process and I'm really glad that we have council representation on that commission. It's a very interesting process and we're going to about, about to dive into that for the fire department as well.
Thank you. We'll bounce back to Mr. Moore with Parks and Rec Committee for an action item.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item that was not on the consent agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve a temporary community event application for the bed races event on Saturday, November second, twenty twenty four from eleven AM to two PM. Third Avenue to be closed between Main Street and Star Street from nine AM to three PM, conditioned upon receipt of all fees and valid certificate of insurance, naming borough as insured, recommended in committee three zero with one abstention.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Dugan. Questions on the motion for the TCE? I anticipate one abstention. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries six zero one. We look forward to the return of that event. Anything else, Mr. Moore?
Just that there was a discussion prompted by staff about the question as to whether we should consider an alternative to fireworks. For Fourth of, to commemorate the Fourth of July in twenty twenty five, there was a frank discussion. No recommendation was made to bring forward to council. So we, we did decide to direct staff as it plans budget to include funds for fireworks for their twenty twenty five. And we could discuss that during the budget season.
Thank you. Mr. Carmineo is not here, but Policy Committee did not meet last month. Their next scheduled meeting is July twenty third. That is a Tuesday, July twenty third. So that is the next meeting for Policy Committee. Mr. Weiss with Infra, Infrastructure, Technology, Transportation and Sustainability.
Thank you, Mr. President. No updates at this time. Our next meeting will be one week from tonight in this room at seven PM on seven sixteen. We love visitors. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Dugan with Finance.
Also, everything handled on the consent agenda.
Very good. With that, we'll open up the second final round of public participation. Any members joining us virtually or in the room, those in the room, please make your way up to the podium. There is a sign in sheet beneath the microphone. We just asked that you sign in with your name and information. And then when you begin speaking, if you can provide us with your name and whether you are a resident or business owner. And then members joining us on Zoom, if you can go ahead and raise your hand digitally, should you want to make public comment, we will start with those joining us in the room.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Blickler. I'm actually from Spring City. And I'm actually a candidate running for the twenty-sixth district. So it's great to get out here and listen to the issues that are challenging your borough. I will say it's actually, I've been to quite a few meetings in the last two months. This is by far one of the best run meetings that I have been part of. So I got to tell you guys, for somebody who sat in just about every meeting from Elversen to Phoenixville, you guys run a great meeting. And I will say the rapport between your police department and your staff is unbelievable. Okay, Mayor, I, and Chief, I think you guys have done a great job. Two items that I wanted to bring to your attention, just because it came up during the meeting, during your meeting, and I want to kind of provide what I feel is kind of a a bigger Chester County view. Fireworks is an issue across the board. Okay, fireworks and firearms discharge during the Fourth of July week has everything from Elversen, West Nathmil Township, all the way to your team. Okay? I know that there's some folks that are looking at drones as alternatives to the fireworks. Okay? There's also one of the Coventry's, I think it's East Coventry's actually looking at a fireworks permit specific with some pretty heavy fines. They had a, they had an event where a resident spent thirty thousand dollars on fireworks in a neighborhood and did a pop-up Facebook, come to my event. And basically lit their, just about lit their entire development on fire. Okay? At the time, the police officers couldn't get in because access was blocked by the number of cars. So fireworks is an issue, not just for you guys, but for across the board. And then one of the other things, and I will say this is kind of striking close to home for me, is there's a bill right now that's been proposed down in Harrisburg. It has to do with food processing waste and I'm sure you guys have heard a lot about it. One of the, one of the things, and we're just going to bring it up to you, is one of your industries here in Phoenixville is going to be impacted by this, your breweries. Okay, that brewer's grain is considered food processing waste. Okay, so when they, when there's some legislation that's getting pushed through, like for example, to move that food processing waste or the brewer's grain will require a manure hauler certification. Okay, this may become something of a new cost that the team here in Phoenixville doesn't see today and maybe something that comes to rest with you at some point. But again, it's something that's in process right now. Mr. Freel has been doing a great job of communicating what's going on with it. I will say there's, there's good and bad in this, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention because, you know, quite honestly, I, I get, I run, I own Cobb's Dairy out of Spring City. And we get our brewer's grain from Stable Twelve route down. We're out here routinely. And that will change business for us as well. So it's not just about the, again, and I'll say this, I'm sure you guys have seen the most recent articles from Montgomery County of the animal parts and dumpsters and things like that. That's pretty egregious, we would all say, but on some parts, the baby and the bath water here are hard to separate. So just to keep that in mind, is your business, your business owners may come talk to you about it and maybe something worthwhile. The East Coventry team, East Coventry advocacy and some of those folks, they've done an outstanding job on educating the, the local community and public. So if it's something that kind of catches, you got fifteen minutes to get yourself up to speed, just in case your constituents come wanting to talk about it. It's something that I think would be worth your time. So thank you for your effort and thanks for your time. Thank you.
So thank you. If any other members in, in public or on Zoom tonight? With that, we will close the second and final round of public participation. Any other updates or new issues from council for council communications? Seeing none, in our packets tonight, we have our staff reports for manager, police, fire, planning codes, public works, finance, human relations and recreation. One on the back of your agenda tonight and posted online is our upcoming meetings with dates associated. Do keep track on our website and on our Facebook for any that might be canceled. At this point, we intend for that list to be the accurate and true list for now through the beginning of August. Before we have a, we don't have any effect tonight. Okay, before we have a motion to adjourn, I do just want to recognize that we have close to one hundred and fifty years of service anniversaries this June. Of those, we have Corporal Todd Arx, who's celebrating thirty-three years with the borough. Robert Shermack, who's twenty-five years in our water treatment operator. Pete Bunelli is twenty-four years right behind Robert there. Officer Matthew Clements, who is now here twenty-three years with our police department. Mr. Gene Crack, who is celebrating sixteen years in the fine borough. Michael O'Brien, who's fifteen years with water distribution. Corporal Anthony Gray, who is now eight years with the police department. And Kevin Gordon, who is now two years with our sanitation team. So I do want to thank all of our employees who are celebrating the anniversaries this month. It is, we cannot operate this small city without them. So with that and seeing no need for executives to session tonight, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. We'll see everybody next month. Have a great week.